So this year, as far as reserve fund goes, we typically have anywhere around $160,000, $175,000 in the reserve fund. I think last year, we had brought that up to just over $200,000 for additional legal expenses. And then this most recent town meeting, we actually were hoping, you know, we were prepared to present a budget that had, you know, that didn't need all of our free cash to balance itself. But because of COVID and the unknown impacts of, you know, what those expenses were going to be or how our revenues were going to get hit, we took that extra money and we put it into the reserve fund. So the reserve fund this year was at, I think Allison jumped in, I think it was $340,000 something thousand. So extremely high compared to past years.
Correct.
And what we are coming to you guys for these transfer requests, the biggest one is our public health. So the town has, you know, we've received or been awarded, we've been awarded about $310,000 through FEMA and through the CARES Act for COVID-related expenses. So that money was due to expire at the end of December. Every community was working under this guidance. On December 23rd, or no, even later, I think it was like 26th or 27th, we got notification from the state that the recently passed CARES Act bill by Congress actually extended that deadline for another year. However, it did not include additional funding. So in the last two, three weeks of December, we were operating under the understanding, we had to use it or lose it. So we bought, you know, a significant amount of supplies to try to get, you know, stock up as best we can in case we didn't get any more money. And then days before the end of the year, we were told, actually now you need to take this money you have left and spread it out over an entire year. So, you know, what that looks at is about, we spent in nine months, $310,000. So we're averaging about 100 grand a quarter. And looking forward, we, Allison will can talk to you about the call she was on yesterday that talked about potential future funding under the Biden administration and under the new Senate and Congress that may come any, you know, in the coming months. But we don't have a definitive date of that. So we need to bridge that gap. So we put together a proposal here that gets us through March. We looked at our expenses under COVID for the last nine months. As I said, we spend about 100 grand and that's about what this, that's about what this reserve fund transfer is for, 104,000. Originally, a lot of the money was for supplies, getting us into remote, remote working, PPE for our fire, for our police, for our employees, you know, things of that nature. In the, in the last few months, or the last six months or so, five months, it shifted more towards professional services and salaries. So with the surge, you know, early on before the summer and most recently, our health nurse hours has skyrocketed. With the ever-changing reopening phases and how that impacts our businesses, our health inspectors' hours has gone up because he has to make sure that our businesses are adhering to that. And then of course, testing, you know, testing is a huge piece for us. When you're dealing with an asymptomatic, 80% asymptomatic virus, having free local convenient testing is the, is one of the best tools to capture people that may not know that they're carrying the virus. And so they just pay, it's free, it's right down the street, I'm going to go get a test. They come up positive, we put them in quarantine, we prevent some transmission. You know, so that however, isn't cheap. In, you know, we started in mid-November and we spent 40 grand by the end of the, by the end of December. So it's, you know, it is expensive. We had to suspend testing. We were doing two days a week and we had to suspend it because of this funding issue. And luckily, we were provided a generous donation from the Hot Preservation Trust that allowed us to open testing back up for two hours on Saturday, last Saturday. It will also extend for another two Saturdays. And then if we get, you know, this reserve fund transfer goes through, we have money in here set aside for testing as well. And again, it's to hopefully bridge that gap. We also looked at, you know, what are we averaging on cost of salaries and supply? And we put this to through the end of March. So if you look at the spreadsheet I had sent yesterday, you'll see there's about $49,000, $49,530 in salaries. And that again, is spread out amongst all the different town employees that are performing COVID-related activities for 13 weeks. COVID supplies, again, we, we stocked up pretty well. So we think we can make 10,000 stretch to the end of March. And then purchase services. So that, you know, that is, that's going to, that has a lot to do with testing, regular cleaning, we have an outside cleaning service that cleans the fire department, the police station, and the town hall and the vehicles. Once a week, it comes in with the, it's like an air sprayer type disinfectant that's actually helped us keep our numbers down. So things like that. And then the other thing I'll just mention is that with the vaccine, right now, we have to pay, so in order to provide the vaccine to our first responders in this first round here, we actually, our health nurse Deb Murphy actually is, is working the vaccine facility that we have to pay for those, for those costs. So with her there, we have to bring in a secondary nurse to help with contact tracing back here in town. So it does increase the cost. So, but that, if we don't, you know, if we didn't get this on the agenda tonight, we really, we wouldn't technically wouldn't be able to pay her at the end of the week. We are at zero at this point. So I appreciate you adding it to the agenda.
So, so FinCom, what, I think what I heard is this is a transfer request to pay COVID-related expenses to cover January through March. It's based on our experience year-to-date from whenever this damn thing began until December. And my floor is open. Further discussion?
Yes. Tony, we talked about this a little the other day. How much of that request is going to go to testing?
I put $28,000. Testing is $70 a test. And, you know, our max capacity, like right before Thanksgiving or right before Christmas, when we were, when most people were coming to get a test, we were right around 100, 120 tests in that two-hour span. So it was around $7,000 a day. So, you know, right now, we're not averaging as high. We're more like anywhere from, you know, 50 to 75. So that money spreads a little bit further if you, if you're thinking on a per-day basis. So at, you know, if we maxed out, that should buy us four more Saturdays. If we don't, it could extend more than that.
Well, that's the reason I ask you, are we asking for, are we requesting enough of a transfer amount to get us through until we get some of that CARES Act money?
So, again, we don't have a definitive date as to when we'll see more funds. But we're hoping that we will be able to stretch, stretch this money as far as we can. And if we, and if we can't and we haven't seen more, more money and it's something we want to continue to do and need more, we can, you know, come back to the Finance Committee for more.
The worst case, come March, we may find another one of these.
Yeah. And Allison may, you know, would you like to hear a little bit about the information she got about additional funding in the pipeline?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I would.
Okay. So I was on a call yesterday and they talked about they're calling the Supplemental CARES Act, CARES Act 2.0. And some of the funding that they mentioned may come through and it's just uncertain as to how it's going to reach us at the local level. But they said it did include 4.5 billion for vaccine planning and distribution. Those funds are being transferred from the CDC to state public health departments and then will likely trickle down to local health departments. Those funds must be spent by September 2024. So I do think that we'll likely receive some sort of funding for that. Again, we don't know what the amount will be exactly for Nahat yet. They also spoke about 22 billion for contact tracing and testing. Those funds are supposed to be transferred from the federal government to state public health departments as well. And the idea is that they will filter down to local health departments. Those funds are supposed to be spent by September 2022. And again, we don't know exactly the amount that will, that's meant for, you know, each town, but it sounds like we should, shall be the recipient of some of those funds as well. And then they had two other types of funding. They talked about 14 billion for transit infrastructure grants. And then they talked about a billion for tribal broadband connectivity programs that would be transferred to tribal governments and tribal state colleges and universities. So it does sound like, you know, the CARES Act 2.0 will come with some money. We're just uncertain as to, you know, how that's going to trickle down to local government and what that amount might mean for us.
Did I hear correctly? Oops.
I'm sorry, Jeff. I, I just, a quick question I was going to ask. Tony, have we done any preparation for being able to deliver the vaccine within Nahat?
So unfortunately, we're, we don't have a ton of control on that other than our, you know, partnership with Lynn. We know that we are, you know, we're, Lynn is committed to us and our partnership with them in that the next phase, we will be, you know, participating in that. But it's really, the, the distribution of the vaccine is about 10 times behind schedule. And that's a state, you know, that, that's something we don't control. So as soon as, I think just yesterday, the governor came out and talked about Phase 2. So we're in Phase 1 with it, which is first responders and healthcare officials. It's a two, it's at Phase 1, it takes two shots. So in about two or three weeks, those who got their first dose will come back and get their second. And then Phase 2, the governor just announced yesterday, you know, not so much like how soon it's going to be coming out, but talked about who's going to be getting it and, you know, their goals. But as soon as we have that information, we'll be presenting it out to the public. We will be, have, we will have to go to Lynn to get it. And we'll, and we will staff it.
Allison, did I hear, did I hear dates of 2022 and 2024?
Correct. Yes. So that's what. Yes. Yeah. So.
We're on our own for a while.
A long time.
That's what it sounds like. And it's very uncertain, obviously, with, you know, the presidential inauguration occurring next week and the new president coming in. So yeah, they did give those two dates, which are part of the bill. And so yes, I don't know the timing of the funding.
What?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry.
I was just going to make, I was trying to make funny. If I'm still around, maybe, maybe I'll see the money come in. I don't know.
Well, if, if we're still around when this money comes in, what happened? It, it just flows through the general fund? Back through the general fund?
No, we actually have a deficit spending account that we had to go to, we had to go to the DLS for authority based on what we were awarded. So we just charge it to, we deficit spend on it and then we submit, you know, kind of like with FEMA projects for reimbursement.
Good.
Did we carry until 2024?
What was that?
Will we carry that? We submit the bill for reimbursement, but if it's 2022 or 2024, that's between 24 months and 48 months before we get the cash. So short-term borrowing on the interim? Or if we've got free cash, that it comes out of our free cash?
So we, we will likely need to wait guidance from the state. These funds would flow through the state and through ANF. And I know with this year's CARES Act funding, some of the funding came in the end of FY20 in June and some came in, you know, as of now. So they were allowing deficits to roll over into the new fiscal year. That might be the same in this case.
Is there any thought about these loans being forgivable?
Well, it's not really a loan. It's, so CARES Act, there's two different funds, sources of fund. The CARES Act money is 100% reimbursable, FEMA's 75%. So, you know, we spend, FEMA, the CARES Act money is a little bit more broad as to eligible expense. So we're trying to spend, you know, under that account as much as possible first before we start spending under the FEMA award. So I don't know, I, I think it's not really a loan. It's, it's, Allison, you might have to speak a little bit more about the actual, you know, functionality of how we're able to pay for it in a deficit spending type of way to answer.
Yeah, my concern is liquidity. I mean, at 104,000 a quarter, that's a lot of cash out and no cash in.
No, we have, so Allison, you, we talked about this the other day about, you know, in Marblehead, you had put in a bunch upfront. We had put in like 60 something grand in already for the town in Nahat. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. So I believe through the first act of CARE, the first round of CARES Act funding for Nahat, the total available is 300,000, correct, Tony?
It was like 310, yeah.
And so what the town had done prior to, you know, to me getting there was they'd spend, you know, they spent a bunch and then submitted for reimbursement and then that reimbursement came through. So what I came from Marblehead, and in Marblehead, we requested our whole allocation upfront. And so we actually received our whole allotment and started spending down from that. So we did it a little bit differently. I think the same opportunity will be available through the second round of funding. And I do think that the town will have to be somewhat frugal until we know the exact amount that's going to be coming from the state. So that's why this reserve fund transfer request is before you. We do know that money is available in the general fund and can be spent and we're hoping that it'll be 100% reimbursed once we know our CARES Act funding allotment.
So Allison, this is Mark, Tony and Allison, I believe this would be considered a rand, a revenue anticipation note, correct?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You could do it in that way. Correct.
Hey.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a comment or a question actually to Tony or to Allison. And is, the state has a number of sites over in Lynn for testing. Have we been able to contact our representatives in the government, the state government about maybe getting a site over here in Nahat as part of that? So free testing over there? And could we play?
Lynn's in a, in a, in a much more critical situation than we are. They've been in the, they've been a red community since they started categorizing them by colors. So I'm not 100% sure if they're using their CARES Act or if they have a separate type of agreement with the state for testing there or the federal government directly. But we have been advocating to our state reps and state reps and senator and as well as, you know, to the federal government regionally about the need for more funds for testing.
If I, if I heard correctly, we do have a testing facility, but it's only open Saturdays?
So that's a contract that we worked out with, with Cataldo directly. But we pay for that with, we've been paying for that with our CARES Act money until most recently with the, with the donation from NPT.
And then we owe a huge thank you to NPT for that, by the way.
Yes, extremely generous. And again, it's tough because the, the dollars, you run through those dollars so fast with testing, but it's so important. So it, you know, we have to be, at the same time, you know, when we were getting to the bottom of our amount of CARES Act, you know, our contact tracing is the most important. Deb Murphy and the work that she's doing is, is at the, at the highest importance because that allows us to, you know, put people in quarantine when they need to be. And of course, our health inspector too, and testing is right there with it. You spend through it quickly, but it's so important. Like I said, if you, you know, even if it only costs 20 bucks or if you had to go across the causeway, if you have no symptoms and no real need to get a test, you might not do it. But if it's free and it's right in town and it's, you know, midday on a Sat, on a weekend, you know, you're capturing so many more people that way. And it's really important. So.
There's no food here, honey. No food. Nope.
Hey, hey, Bob, to, to answer your question, we had ample funding. When we had ample funding, we were doing testing two days a week.
Yeah, that was $14,000 a week, you know, so trying to stretch it out here by offering, doing it on Saturdays.
So I guess we're going to come back to the question, but so what of our state reps is, I mean, are we able to, to get into the state program and, you know, sort of get some more funds at the testing?
Well, what Allison was just saying was there's more money coming. It sounds like it's, there's more money coming, but for specifically for testing and vaccine distribution. We just don't have a date yet.
Dana, let me just say that I use the Beacon Commonwealth testing program. I've used it probably four or five times, either in Vier or Lynn now on Rossum Street. And I went on, I think on like a Monday, I got a, I was scheduled to be tested on Tuesday at 9:00 AM and there was no wait. So I encourage people to, if they don't want to wait in line in Nahat, go onto the Beacon Commonwealth program, their website, and sign up. It's, it's pretty efficient.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, Mark. I've gotten tested over there three times and not had to wait long at all, except for one time around Thanksgiving when, you know, it was full. But yeah, it's, it's available to us. So.
All right. So FinCom, somebody want to make a motion here?
Yeah, so moved. I, I make a motion to accept the transfer as requested.
Okay. And that was?
I'll second that.
Judy. Yep.
And Barbara seconds.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, I think you have to do a vote call.
Yeah, yeah. I was just going to say, can we do names and vote?
Whit Brown, aye.
Jeff Lewis, aye.
Julie Tarmey, aye.
Judy Sahora, aye. Barbara, you are mute.
Barbara Sweeney, aye.
I, I saw Barbara say aye.
I did.
Barbara Sweeney, but Barbara Beatty, you, we're on mute.
Okay. Aye. Sorry. Barbara Beatty, aye.
I think Dana was an aye.
Yep.
And Vander Slice is an aye. That's great. Unanimous.
Great. Thank you. So with, starting at $340,445, with the approval of that, 104,380 reserve fund, you're now at a $236,065 balance. We have the other two. Do you want to go through those pretty quickly? Okay. So the next one is with the overlap of Allison and Debbie at this, you know, working at the same time for training, we need some more funds in our accounting salary, our accountant salary account
I'm sorry, Jeff, was that a so moved or?
So that's, that's over and above what's already in there?
Yes, due to the overlap.
And you mentioned some of that was a Coop vacation?
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, could, could you, I don't, it doesn't, I don't have the detail. Does it matter?
Do you have the detail, Allison, on how much of this 23-9 is salary overlap and how much of it is vacation?
Don't have it right in front of me, but let's see if I can pull it up quick.
Which schedule is it on your email, Tony?
So there is no additional schedule for it. Yeah, we only broke out the COVID ones.
In the email, Tony, there's, there's five schedules. Which one is we referring to or is it not there?
It's not there. You have a, you have one Word document that is a reserve fund request form for this, but it doesn't break down, it doesn't answer the question that Jeff's asking.
Okay. So.
So whatever it is.
Yeah. Is this one pressing? Can we push this to next week? If, if we don't want to take action without the, yep?
Without the what?
Backup. Sorry. Without the, the detail.
I have it right here. Sorry. So the payout for Deb's retirement for the, for vacation time, that accounts for $15,896. And then the rest is for four weeks of overlap. So it's four weeks of her salary and my salary.
Well, it ought to be one or the other, not both.
Correct. Sorry. So it would be for mine, I guess. Which, so four weeks is, sorry.
16 out of 24. Dude, that was just an FYI question on my part. Well, I, I think you look at me sometimes, should I make a motion? I have no idea how to make a motion. Do I like, do I need to stick to something?
No, no, no. You, you simply say, I, I, probably the easiest is to just say so moved, which is shorthand for I, I.
Well, move.
Taking the motion and I'm moving it.
So I second it. This is Judy.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote?
Barbara Beatty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Jeff Lewis, aye.
Julie Tarmey, aye.
Dana?
Dana Sheehan, aye.
Vander Slice, aye.
Judy Sahora, aye.
I'm sorry, Judy, you've disappeared off the screen and we've, I forgot about you. All right, so that one's unanimous as well.
Okay, so now you are at a $212,165,000 balance. And the last reserve fund is the cost of the RKG study.
Oh, God, that's.
And it's $12,500. So if approved, the, your, your final balance will be $199,665, which is, you know, pretty good shape for six months, you know, halfway through the year.
I remember my time, Tony, the, the, uh, Fritcon only had $35,000 all year.
Yeah, I remember the good old days. The dollar went so much further then.
Trust me, I was, I was, um, I was so happy to report that we didn't need to use all of our free cash to balance the budget. But, you know, we had, this was the best thing to do. So we had this flexibility mid-year in case we needed it due to revenue shortages or costs. So I'm glad we did it.
Good move, yeah.
Worked out.
Both you and the FinCom, good move.
Hey, FinCom, further questions on that one?
I'm moved to, to accept, to approve this. I'll second.
I, I don't understand the amount. How much was the total for with this, with the RKG?
The cost of the consultant was $12,500.
That was the total or is this in addition to?
This is the total cost of, of the RKG report, yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a, they came in with an estimate and then this went over and above.
This is the, we, we actually haven't, haven't actually physically received the final invoice yet, but I had a conversation and with them and they said it was 12,500.
Was it, Tony, how many hours was involved with the creation of that report from RKG?
Uh, I'm not, I don't, I don't know, Dana.
Is that on the invoice?
We don't have the invoice yet. Okay.
Tony, do we have the report?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it went out in email and it's on the website.
Yeah, it's eight pages.
Yeah, it looks like a combination of what Bob did and what Mark did.
Wait, is that, is that that first one we got last?
Yeah, that's the report.
That's it?
Yeah, it's eight pages.
That's the one that the work that the Bob did? I mean, no, 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 I know, but I know that, that, but it came from them, but it didn't look, it didn't, I guess I expected after, you know, I guess I thought that was a preliminary, we would get something that actually was of value, more value. Do you know what I'm saying? It's not what I, it's not what I anticipated for what we paid for. All right, it is what it is.
I, I don't know, I, you know, I didn't, um, I wasn't there with them, you know, every step of the way. Um, I don't know how many hours they worked on it. I don't know, you know.
I think we have a right to ask that. We're paying the bill.
Let me just, I, I don't know how many hours specifically they, they spent, but I, I knew, I know I've been anticipating this for, for the last five or six months and every selectmen's meeting, I've been asking for a status update on it. I know I spent several hours on the phone with the consultant, um, asking questions. I know the consultant has been in town, um, meeting with department heads, et cetera. Talking to them about the impact on their departments, police, fire, DPW, general services, those types of things. So I don't know the exact number of consulting hours, um, but I know they've been working on it for a long time, longer than I, than I'd wished.
Amen.
Mark, does it help you achieve what you wanted?
Well, I, I, I think what it does is, um, you know, if you've had, had a chance to take a look at the report, I think it reaffirms the report that the Board of Selectmen and I know that Bob Vander Slice had worked on. You know, the, the, the big difference between the two reports was that RKJ.
I don't, I don't want to cut you off on this, but we, we have an agenda item to discuss this.
Okay, fine. All right.
Really what we're, we're talking about now is do we want to pay this? You know, raise this reserve, and I apologize for, you know, jumping in. I, I, I think we will, we will have this conversation, this, but not just yet.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
Understood.
FinCom, a, a motion here, and, and the motion might be to wait until we see the invoice and/or ask for an accounting of hours as well.
I make a motion that we wait to see the invoice and have an accounting of hours.
Second that.
All in favor? Or sorry, roll call vote, I guess is a better way to say.
Beatty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Tarmey, aye.
Dana, aye.
Uh, Vander Slice, aye.
Sahara, aye.
Okay, and that's it?
Who seconded that, please? Um, I had seconded it. Okay, thank you.
Judy moved it and Barbara seconded it.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you, do you have the reserve funds that were approved in your email? If you want to print them or we have them printed at the town hall and stop by to sign them at some point next week? Bob or John?
All right, but you, you need a, a physical piece of paper with a real honest to God signature. We can't do this electronically.
Yeah, if you have the ability to, uh, print and scan, I'll, I'll take it.
Okay.
So Tony, part of the, the, the emergency money, wasn't that, couldn't that have been used to do upgrades like have DocuSign, have a second web, uh, web link? Couldn't that money have gone through some of that as well?
Um, you know, we actually were just talking, DocuSign really hasn't been a, um, hasn't been like a, a major need for us recently, uh, until recently. But, you know, Zoom certainly, we've, you know, probably spent about a grand on Zoom. And we've, you know, spent some funds on other things that allow us to, you know, improve our ability to, you know, communicate publicly, you know, continue to do the business of, of the different committees. You know, the ability to broadcast it on cable TV and things of that nature. You know, we have that, we have the one Zoom account. Quite frankly, it hasn't been, you know, the, the activity of committees hasn't been that high that it was necessary to have two. Uh, but it's something that we could, we, you know, there's money in here for purchase services. We could purchase a secondary one. You know, now that we're heading into a busier season.
That's what I was thinking too. We're going to start to hit budget, we're in budget season now. And our goal was always that we would do that much sooner than, you know, two minutes before the town meeting. So, and, and we do it in an orderly basis. So we have time to, um, process, ask the questions, all of that. And it does seem to me that, um, one is not going to be sufficient.
Yeah, and would be, before we move on to the next topic, I guess I would second what Judy's been saying. I, I run into it when we try to schedule FinCom meetings, probably 50% of the time. And, and when there is a conflict, I've been using my personal WebEx account. It just doesn't, somehow it doesn't always feel right to me to do that, but it gets the job done anyway. So.
We have, yeah. We'll, we'll definitely reach out to Zoom or order it online or, you know, they're, they are, uh, you know, it shouldn't be a problem. They're, they're not the easiest company to deal with, to be honest, and everybody is, they are in high, high demand, but I don't think it should be that big of a deal for us to get a second account so that two meetings can occur at the same, on the same night.
It's probably just a change in your account type or status or something rather than a second account. You know, you, you, you're gonna have to go from the, the silver to the gold or something. Anyway, all right.
I'd be embarrassed to tell you how many hours I was on the phone just trying to increase the amount of participants that can be on our current account.
Oh, okay. In other words, it may be easier to just open a second account.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. All right, so our, our next topic was planning for town meeting.
Okay, so that you have a, a Word document that says FY22 budget preparation schedule in your emails? So, you know, working backwards from town meeting date, met Saturday, May 15th. It will be annual town meeting. We do have quite the amount of, um, articles that may take longer than, you know, the meeting may take longer than usual. So I do have in here a, a potential for day two, which would be Monday, May 17th. And then I have, um, rain options for the following weekend.
And the rain options, Tony, because we still expect it to be outdoors?
Yeah, so, you know, with the amount of people that we're expecting to attend based on the, um, you know, the questions that are, the article, articles on the warrant, regardless of COVID, we're going to be outside. Question is, for me, is whether we have to keep everybody six feet apart. Um, and whether or not we'll be in attendance or not. By the way, you asked me about potential future reserve fund transfers. That may be one. That may be one of them. Um, so Saturday, May 15th means the Advisory and Finance Committee Recommendation Book needs to be on the doorsteps of every household with a registered voter by Friday, May 7th. And it also means that the, the warrant, the final warrant needs to be posted by Friday, April 30th. For a delivery date of May 7th, looking at Sterling's previous, you know, interaction with the printer in the past, that means it usually needs to get in the mail a week prior to that. And then they usually like two weeks finalize the margins and the, and the, and the final report and get it printed. So it looks like a Friday, April 30th, I'm sorry, um, Friday, April 9th would be the deadline for the Finance Committee to get their final book, their final draft to the printer. Which means, you know, in the past, we've always tried to do even more than eight weeks or two months for the FinCom, but eight weeks gets us to, uh, February 4th. So in, you know, just a short two and a half weeks or three weeks from now, you know, we should be sending you guys a final or as close to final warrant and budget. Um, and then of course, per our town bylaws, January 31st, which is a Sunday this year, is the final day for, um, citizen petitions and any committee deadline for warrant articles to be submitted. So we meet, uh, the first Thursday of February, uh, the 4th. So on that meeting, we will close and approve the warrant, um, as well as the budget and send that over to you. Um, of course, like as, as you guys know, there is potential for changes, um, between February 4th and, um, April 9th. But the bulk of that should be to you in the next couple of weeks. I haven't, I, the CPC, uh, CPC Committee met you last night. I need to, I need to, uh, book some time with Lynn Spencer, the Chairwoman, to get a better understanding of their schedule or let them have a better understanding of this schedule. You know, on the, on the plus side, you know, all the work that they did last year will be transferred into this year's warrant. I don't know if they plan to, you know, ac- accept new grant applications, um, or, you know, or what. So I gotta talk to them, find out, uh, what their schedule looks like as well. Any questions about this schedule?
Jeez, Tony, thank you very much. It's really, really helpful to have this in front of us now. So although this makes, you know, my hands sweat and all of a sudden we're, you know, frigging in the middle of spring and, and I, I, it, it, it's really, really good to have right now. Thank you.
I know.
That way you can find another month to squeeze in there.
Wow, you know, if we just, we've just gone through the entire, um, and I, I will send a note out to the Coast Guard Committee, which is not its formal name, um, and ask them what they want to do. You know, what's the plan going forward? Because we really need to get that settled up. Time is just running out on that.
Thank you, Judy.
Feels like, feels like just yesterday we were down Flash Road.
Yes, this is like deja vu all over again.
Yeah, yeah, Groundhog Day. But this is great. I think this is the first time I've ever seen, um, a schedule upfront. Maybe it's not, but it's the first time I remember. So thank you.
You're welcome. It is, it's, you know, we want to, every year we talk about getting it to you guys sooner and sooner. And I wish, you know.
Tony, I, I, I know this is, this is awesome as it stands. Are, when will you be comfortable enough with the budget that you could give us like an early draft? You know, it, you know, okay, it might move a little bit here and there, but the basic structure is there. Is that still February 4th or, or, or could that be earlier?
I, February 4th, to be honest, we're, you know, we still have a few more department head meetings to, to have. And then of course I need to, you know, brief the Board of Selectmen on it and get their approval before I can send it to you. So realistically, you know, if we can get it to you before February 4th, we, we will try. But, you know, that's, that's going to be here before, before we know it.
Okay. All right. So que- questions on the schedule before we go on? No? All right. Um, so I, I kind of, my, my, the next topic in my head is like content of this meeting. So my understanding is that this town meeting is everything that got postponed from the, the last town meeting, i- in less time and circumstances have made it move, plus potentially new issues as well.
That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
Okay, so we're still.
Maybe, maybe, you know, on borrowing articles, um, you might see some change there, um, you know, with, uh, utilization of free cash instead of borrowing of some sort here and there. Um, or new capital needs that have come up since September, um, you know, urgent ones. So there's that. Uh, but for the bulk of the warrant articles, it's what we saw, you know, just before we slimmed down the warrant. And the citizen petitions that were there will now be actually Board of Selectmen, um, articles. That was how we had to do it because of, because of them being citizen petitions originally. So they'll be actually sponsored by the Selectmen. Yeah.
All right. And what, what do we think are the big rocks in there?
Well, certainly Coast Guard, Coast Guard Committee, Coast Guard Housing, um, article. The Northeastern eminent domain. I don't, like I said, I don't know if anything's changed as far as the CPC grant that's related to that. But obviously, you know, those three pieces are going to be, we can expect a lot of debate on those issues.
And, and that will drive attendance as well. And that will drive attendance as well.
Right. Like I said, I, I, you know, it would be ideal if we could, if we didn't have to be six feet apart from each other. And then I could get a few tents and have everybody covered from the sun. But if we can't do that, then it's going to be impossible or, you know, it would just be far too expensive. So we'd be sitting out in open fields, spread out like the original plan.
Yeah, I, I, I can't help but saying, as usual, town meeting will be intense.
Yes. Yes, so. I've already spoken with, you know, a couple of the vendors that we used at the last town meeting. You know, unfortunately for them, their schedules are wide open right now because of everything that's going on with COVID. So we're starting to pencil them in. And and work out those logistics.
But there's, there's no possibility of it being at Town Hall?
I don't think so. Our max capacity is like 416. And that's packed to the brim.
And that's cheek by jowl in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The good thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we, you know, we have a plan in place. We have a plan that has been reviewed by all of the town committees. We didn't actually execute it to its fullest last year. But we have a plan in place that we can execute, I think, this year if needed.
Okay, FinCom or Selectmen, more questions or discussions on that?
Michael.
All right.
All right.
Hopefully we can, you know, repeat the success of September's town meeting. And, you know, keep it nice and safe, keep everybody safe. And hopefully it's a beautiful spring day.
Okay, thank you.
Implore Tony to get the, Allison to get the budget to FinCom as soon as feasible. Thank you.
All right. And then, let's see, on our side, I'm kind of thinking out loud right now. Is everyone clear on their department or committee or issue assignments?
No, were we issued assignments? I don't recall.
Well, we didn't do that yet. We care, kind of carried over from last year, but all right, so I'll, I'll take that as homework for next meeting.
Thank you.
I want to sit with John on, on that as well, so.
Okay.
Maybe dependent on his health.
I might also suggest, you know, looking at the calendar between February 4th and April 9th and start, you know, maybe blocking off those days so we can, you know, get them into the calendar and, and even, you know, even if they're, you know, at least like the Zooms reserved and, you know. But also if you, I can talk to my department heads as well if, you know, given that it's Zoom. If you wanted to, you know, meet with, you know, like a three hour span on a, on a Saturday or something in the morning. If it's by Zoom, I'm sure my department heads could accommodate that. Or, you know, I don't know, Zoom may open up a little bit more flexibility with getting those meetings done versus, you know, in years past, having to be in the Town Hall. So maybe think about that and get that booked out ahead of time.
Yeah, and a- as we're coming into the season, do, do any of the FinCom members have a strong preference or a strong dislike for any particular day?
Surprisingly, I'm free.
Exactly.
Just saying.
And weekends are not quite as meaningful as they used to be.
Not like they used to be.
I like to stay weekends. Someone tell me, when, when, when are weekends? I don't even know what they are.
Right, agreed.
Tony, I'd like to re-extend that offer on the water and sewer. If you need a, a strong back and a weak mind and Allison needs a little help, I'll, I'll extend myself. I don't know what I can bring to the party, but I've done a ton of reading. And I know that there'll be, there'll be a lot of work, you know, to get that thing, if it's something we're still considering moving forward with. You know, right now, I'm, I'm sure that Allison is feeling like she has a fire hose in her throat. And somebody's opened up the tap full, so she's taking a lot in. But when she gets her, when she can catch her breath, if she needs help, then I'll do what I can. Open offer.
I think.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think, you know, well, why don't, why don't we plan a Zoom session of, of some sort, Jeff, with Allison, you and I, and we can catch her up on last year's conversations about that and, and go from there.
Fine, great, great by me.
Okay.
I, um, but sure, what I, I think I've sent you my email address. You get that. So you can reach me via that, if that's the quickest way. I think you got my phone number.
All right, no, we have it. We'll work, we'll, we'll go by email and we'll, you know, tomorrow or the next day, or next week, we'll reach out to you and schedule something.
Yeah, I think I've got some answers for your question too. Regarding why numbers didn't look right. So maybe we can cover that during the same, same meeting.
Another idea, as well as in the past, the FinCom has had, you know, we've talked about liaisons with department heads. So if you guys wanted to divide and conquer and, you know, if you are working from home or have daytime availability, I'm sure my department heads would, you know, meet with, you know, one, one or, you know, non-quorum, one or two of you guys by Zoom. If you wanted to do it that way, to speed up the process. Just a thought.
Yep, that's what we're going to try to do.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion about town meeting, town meeting schedule and prep? All right, moving on, RKG, the RKG Report. Mark and Selectmen, or I guess Mark in, in particular, I, I think I'd like to start just by reviewing what I put together because I think that may put a little bit of structure to the, to the rest of the conversation. Does that make sense to you, Mark?
Yeah, absolutely, Chairman. Go ahead.
Okay, here we go. I am going to share my screen. And let everybody see this. It should look like a white sheet of paper that says introduction at the top.
Yep.
Yes, thumbs up? Okay. Nobody said no, so I'm just, I'm going to push on. So wh- wh- what I did was I, I tried to compare the RKG Report, which is actually, I mean, it's not quite what I expected in terms of its format, but it, it's pretty close. But I, I tried to compare that to the, the estimate that we put together, which I'm, I'm calling the Nahant Estimate. And this is a three-page document and Julie, I can send it along and we can include it in the minutes if you.
Thank you, thank you.
I put this introduction page in here just because these things tend to have a life of their own. I don't think we need to really talk about that page. I am pushing page down and it's not page down increasingly. There we go. All right, so, you know, executive summary. These were my takeaways from, from reading this. And actually putting some study to it. The RKG estimates are larger than the Nahant estimates at both the low and the high end of the range. So they did it, they did an estimate and kind of like, like we did, they gave a low and a high. The, the next two bullets there are the drivers behind the difference, and those are the, the two big differences. RKG did not include that $6 million incentive payment. Whereas in the Nahant estimate, we assume, in the Nahant low estimate, sorry, we assumed that the town would receive that $6 million. So that's, that's probably the biggest chunk of the difference in the low estimate. The second big difference, which affects the high estimate, not the low estimate really, is that RKG calculated their high and low differently. They calculated the high and low based on headcount or population at the Northeastern facility. Whereas what we did was we just took a percentage range around a base estimate. So we took, I think it was minus 15 as our low, minus 15% from our base and plus 10% as our high. RKG did it as a low population, which was Northeastern's claimed, and a high estimate of population, which is their calculation based on typical occupancy rates for similar kinds of facilities. And then the one that jumped out at me was in, in their closing paragraph, they cautioned us that this, the fiscal impact of this could actually be greater because of Dover. They can do virtually anything they want up there and in their words, you know, it's likely that that will happen and it's likely that the costs therefore would, would increase from what we are seeing here, just as an estimate based on this project as it exists right now. So far so good? Okay, with my detail, here we go. So let me, let me explain what, what you're looking at and what I did here. In this case, the columns are divided into two blocks. So you can see on the left, there's a low which represents the low end of the estimate, the low range of the estimates. And then the block on the right is the high range of the estimates. And then within each block is the Nahant estimate. That's, that's the one that, that we produced and we talked about and really was the impetus for the RKG study here. And then the next column over is the RKG calculation of, of the line item. And then obviously the dollar difference and the percentage difference. So that's done for both the low and the high. Make, that make, that make sense? All right, I'm taking no comments or no questions is, you know, that makes sense. Okay.
Give it, give it, give me just a, give us like two minutes in between, just to process, okay?
Okay, I'll, I'll be quiet.
No, just two minutes, a minute, maybe a minute.
Bob, we might, that, one of the big differences is permit fees there. So you might want to explain that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk through some of these details that are down below. A minute is an awful long time when you're waiting and trying to be quiet.
Good, okay, thanks. It just, it just needed to get to look at it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so some of the, the details, both RKG and us use the same basic estimating approach, which is to calculate a per capita cost. And then apply that per capita cost to the, the population that would be at that Northeastern facility. So it's the same basic idea. Calculate the per capita cost of expenses that, you know, Northeastern is contributing towards. The big one that you would take out is the school cost. Because they don't really.
Let me just add to that, that the per capita cost analysis is really the same that most communities use when they're determining their pilot studies. You know, Boston, Cambridge, you know, all of the other communities that have large educational institutions, when they're trying to figure out what their pay and lower taxes are going to be, typically they use a per capita cost analysis.
Yeah, this is a very common and, and well-respected estimating methodology.
So is there any consideration to other approaches rather than the per capita cost?
They are the ones that suggested using per capita cost. I was on a, a call with them very early in this process where I walked them through our estimate. I, just as, so that they would have some background. And that was really my only interaction with them. And, and at the time, they were talking about doing per capita, but trying to do it only for commercial property. And I think they, they realized or they concluded that there's such a small amount of commercial property in the haunt that it would be basically meaningless to do that. So they, they went with this per capita, you know, that, this, this common per capita kind of a methodology. Is the public allowed to ask questions at this point or? Can, can we wait till the end and then we'll, we'll throw it open?
Sure.
Okay. All right, let's see, as I, as I mentioned earlier, and I'm looking at on item B there, they used a different approach for calculating low, high. We, we did a, a range around a base estimate. And they took population. So they, they used as their low 114, which is what NU has been claiming in, in their filings. Up to their high is 205, which is, they calculate based on typical square foot occupancy of such a, that kind of a facility. So, you know, if you look up at the top now and, and kind of run your finger across the operating expense row, you can see we're really actually surprisingly close at the low end of the range. But that kind of makes sense because we're both using the same population of 114 there. And at the high end of the range, they are significantly higher because they're basing it on, on that typical square foot occupancy rate, not not the, the lower 114 claimed range.
Bob, can I just add in terms of operating expenses that the RKG excluded education?
Yes. Yeah, as, as did we. All right. Next line item and, and comment C down below, RKG, they did not estimate capital costs. They didn't say there wouldn't be any capital costs. In fact, they'd said that, you know, they, there will be capital costs, but they don't have the engineering capability to, to estimate what those might cost. You know, and, and to their point, we, we don't have engineering studies either to, to back that up. So, you know, what we have is we have department heads and engineers who are familiar with typical kinds of projects. And, and that's what our estimates were based on. They're not based on detailed engineering studies. So they, they didn't estimate capital expenses at all. They didn't really try. When you, when you see both the chart on the previous page and the total column, the total row here on this page, it is excluding capital so that we can try to get apples to apples as, as best we can.
So by capital cost, Bob, you mean things like, like wear and tear on the roads over 40 years or increased capacity that needs to be built into the sewer system, that, that kind of thing that
Yeah.
they did not include in theirs?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and, and I just, I want to be clear. One of the capital items was to repave Nahant Road. And in our estimate, it is only to repave Nahant Road once post- And in our estimate, it is only to repave Nahant Road once post-construction. It is not trying to estimate an ongoing acceleration of, of repaving. So everybody, including Northeastern, seems to agree that Nahant Road will need to be repaved after the construction and after all the heavy vehicles are done rolling back and forth on it. So uh, the Nahant estimate is only one repaving of Nahant Road post-construction, the kind of out-of-cycle repaving of it, if you will.
Yep. But that's not included, that, and any other capital costs are not included in the RKG uh, assessment, although they acknowledge they exist, correct?
Correct.
One other thing too, Bob, on the uh, Northeastern University's environmental impact review. They, in their findings, their summary report, the Northeastern has committed to fortifying Nahant Road and uh, you know, repairing it. So I don't see that those, those costs are that, that idea is included here on these reports.
Yeah, I mean, that's a tough one. That, that would have been in that incentive payment of $6 million. I, I and, and RKG have not seen anything that puts that in bidding and maybe, you know, Tony or the selectmen are closer to that than than we are.
No, I think that was in the $6 million uh, estimate.
Yeah, it's a separate item. It's not part of the six million.
I haven't seen that, Dana.
Check the Northeastern's uh, environmental impact review.
Okay, okay. They put a number on that?
Um, I don't have it in the front of my mind, Mark, sorry.
All right.
Hey, hey, Bob, just getting back to the repaving of Nahant Road, they're showing half a million dollars to repave, but then they are showing 800,000 for repair work to 40 steps.
Yeah. That's the revetment. So there's, there's two separate things. The repaving of Nahant Road would be post-construction. And my memory says that it was 500,000.
Yes.
And then the, the other is uh, revetment. So that is reinforcing the hill uh, as you go by 40 steps so that it doesn't fall into the ocean carrying construction vehicles with it. And that's 800 and, 800-ish, something like that. Yeah, and, and that number came is as um, Mark helped me out or Tony helped me out, but there were, there are two different approaches to that revetment. There's a one that is more expensive but, but more permanent. And then there's a second that's uh, le- less permanent and less expensive. And we, we just took the middle ground on that one.
Yeah. That's, yeah. It, I, also, the more permanent one is a steep hurdle with permitting. Um, DEP, you know, prefers and um, pushes that their regs require a soft revetment. A soft bank there. So uh, which pushes us in a, in the direction of a, a cheaper, but a cheaper solution that one-time cost, but obviously something that's gonna need consistent renourishment. Or, you know, annual, but, you know, maybe every couple of years, renourishment. It would obviously more than a, a hard structure.
For sure.
Yeah, I think, Bob, um, focusing on, let's, let's, let's look at this report and the town's report without the capital cost and let's look at the differences.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to, to focus on.
I don't just, I mean, I don't disagree with uh, RK, uh, RKG's reluctance to not build capital because they didn't have the detailed engineering report. So I mean, even if we just focus on the operating expenses. We all know that there'll be some capital costs. There's a question about how much that will be. Um, but let's just focus on the operating expenses.
I, I agree. I don't, I don't know that there's much to be gained by dissecting capital other than, you know, yeah, we know it's, we all know there's something. Right? So I guess for, for purposes of my, my discussion here, I'm kind of done with operating expenses. They're pretty close at the low end. Um, they're dramatically more in the RKG report at the high end. Uh, estimating approach is similar. The, the, the last big difference, we, and we talked about the incentive payment. They, RKG is just saying we're not, we're not gonna even count that incentive payment offer. There's nothing in writing, so you know, we, we, we think it doesn't, you know, it's not, it doesn't exist for the purposes of our report. Our, our, our being RKG in that sentence. Last big difference is uh, the permit fees. So RKG is estimating their construction costs um, at 18 million. Um, our estimate was 55. Our estimate was, was a thousand dollars a foot, which is kind of um, from, from what we can tell from internet research is the typical cost of um, a laboratory building or a, a clean room sort of a building. Um, and they are using a lower number, I think it's like 300 and something a square foot, which is more like typical commercial space construction. You know, what, what they're building there is definitely not typical commercial space. It's complicated. It's at the top of a hill in a very exposed area. It's laboratories, it's wet laboratories. Anyway, but the, the impact to the town is that um, if it costs 55 million, our permit fee revenues would be 660,000. If they claim that if they're gonna be coming in at more like 18 million, the permit fee revenue would be 220,000. So there's almost a $500,000 difference in permit fee revenue between the two. And then if, if you net all of that together, it, which is the rule called net expense including capital. So that is uh, operating expenses minus any incentive payment, minus the permit fees, that's your net expense. Um, you can see the difference. At the low end, it, it's almost uh, they're, they are higher than us by almost $7 million. And at the upper end, uh, I have all your pictures sitting over it, but it's significantly more than that. Yeah.
Okay, just looking at, Bob, if I'm reading your chart right, looking at just operating expenses. Uh, Nahant's low is 14,400,000 over 40 years and a high of 18,500,000 over 40, 40 years. And RKG is estimating between 14,826,600 over 40 years.
Correct.
Big difference.
Yeah.
Uh, and they didn't include this. So you could exclude the, in terms of the um, the uh, incentive payment, the 6 million from RKGs, we should probably do that. Um, that would bring the 14, 8 million down by 6 million. And the RKG 26.6 million down by another 6 million. Um, so it's still pretty significant cost to the town. Regardless of how you look at that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, yes.
Well, it was, this was in the chat and, and that's my question as well. We don't know that that, that they're, that they're using, um, they're building lab space. We, they very possibly could be outbuilding straight up office building.
That's what RKG assumed, right? That's, that's the dollars they assumed. So uh, regardless of which assessment you believe, if you take the lowest possible number, it's a question of how many millions of dollars do the hunters want to subsidize for Northeastern University? Even if you take the very lowest number.
Yeah, I mean, if you, I guess the, the, the one way to look at this is the town is being asked, uh, forced to make a donation of somewhere between 7.7 million and 26 million dollars to Northeastern University over 40 years.
So that's not um, just to be, to speak plainly. Um, that is not an optional payment. That is taxpayers being forced to pay for this, right? So
This, this would be recovered through real estate taxes presumably.
Right. So property owners in the hut would have to make up that difference. So let's not mince words here. That's what we're talking about.
Good point, Josh.
Question's comments? Don't, Tony's been a little bit silent here, but rest of the FinCom?
Numbers don't lie. After reading them, I came up with a real evil idea. If they don't stop, we just put a big, huge wind fan right in front of where their window's gonna be. And that's what they can look at.
But I had someone suggest to me that we install mirrors up at Lodge Park so that we
Absolutely, solar panels.
No, mirrors, so that we can shine the sunlight inside, through their windows.
Yeah, uh, Bob, I want to put a caveat on this because I know I've heard through the rumor mill that, you know, who is RKG and what are their credentials, but I encourage anybody in the town to go onto their website. Uh, look at their professional credentials. Look at the types of work that this company does. Uh, we originally reached out to KP Law, uh, Town Council. And KP Law, I think rightfully said, you know, we probably shouldn't be the, uh, the firm that does this. You need an independent firm. And I, we think we can find you one. And um, we signed on to RKG. And if you look at their website and if you look at their credentials, these people are professionals. They do this all the time. Um, and I have to trust their numbers.
Well, I think what we've learned that the numbers aren't, aren't as far off. I mean, they're, you know, is where we started. So I mean, it's, it, what it has done is confirmed where we started. And that's what we wanted to do, right? We wanted to make certain that it wasn't just something that the FinCom came up with, that we have some confirmation. And we do indeed find out that financially, it's not a good thing for Nahant.
Yeah, Judy, in hindsight, uh, I'm glad that um, the Finance Committee, you know, took a, took a position on this and said, we need some independent numbers. Um, because I, I agree with you. I think it reaffirms our position.
Bob, did you um, happen to take these numbers and divide them by the number of people to figure out what the actual dollar hit would be to property taxes? On the average household?
Um, I believe that's, the selectmen did that in, in their uh, whatever, the second one, whatever they're calling that. But I, I, I don't remember what the number is.
I believe it's in the uh, RKG report, somewhere in the realm of 2,000.
A year.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it, I don't think that that's a one-time fee. So um, but Bob, Bob's right. Effectively, what the residents in the hut will do will be subsidize uh, Northeastern.
Right.
Just to um, you know, reiterate what Mark said, you know, it's um, you know, I'm requested this and um, although it's you know, turned out to be an expensive um, study, uh, when we're talking about millions and millions of dollars, um, it's a small price to pay to get a professional assessment of what the real impacts um, could be or would, would be to the town, to, to the town's residents. So
But it's a study we had to do.
Yeah.
Hey, Josh, this is Dana. Um, yeah, I'd agree with that. And it's good to get some outside experts to uh, to give us some, some information on it. I would however, uh, reserve my own. I'd like to, to look at this a little further, the per capita cost. And um, you know, the 40-year timeframe. I, I just, it's an eight-page report. Not, not, I don't know if it's as thorough as it should be, but um, that's my own take on it at this point.
Dana, uh, let me just add that the reason the 40 years is there is because um, Northeastern proposed giving their incentive $6 million payment, not in a one-time time period, but over a 40-year period. So we based our analysis similarly.
It was over 40 years?
Mm-hmm.
Forgotten that.
I heard it was 20 years. Is that, is it possible that it was 20 years? The 6 million for 20?
It was 40.
40 years.
I thought it was 40.
It is 40.
Wow, I guess I didn't remember that either. And um,
And, and that's not uh, that's not adjusted for inflation. So
Right.
Right. Nor, nor did we try to present value.
$15,000 in uh, the year 2060 is
Right.
A lot less.
Yeah, if you do a present value on it, it, it works out to substantially less than 6 million.
I mean, in, in the end, the, the answer is it's gonna be wildly expensive for Nahant, but we don't, we're not gonna be given the yes or no choice, are we?
Everything in the RKG report points to 40 years.
Yeah.
Judy, what was your comment?
My question, I mean, my, my point is, is that um, in the end, even, I mean, even at this rate, you could see it's gonna be wildly expensive to the residents in the hut. But we're not going to be given a choice, are we?
We made this um, town meeting.
No, no, well, we, the, the choice in the town meeting is whether to continue to um, move forward with trying to stop, stop this. But I mean, it's hard to believe that in the end um, we'll be given a choice.
Well, if the town affirmatively votes to take it by eminent domain, we will stop it.
Yes.
That's if the, if the courts find that that's
No, no. If the, if the town meeting votes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take this by eminent domain, it will stop it.
And wouldn't Northeastern
What makes you think so?
The court?
The court, they can, they can, they can challenge, they can challenge the potanto or the amount we, we've estimated the cost of it. But they can't, they can't contest the taking itself. No.
Right. Can they build it in another location up there, Mark?
No. Well, I mean, I, 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 the Board of Selectmen is willing to negotiate. We've always been willing to negotiate with Northeastern to try to come to some sort of compromise where they can build what they're looking for without not in an area where we feel needs to be protected. So we're willing to continue those negotiations, but I don't think Northeastern is at this point.
Okay.
Mark, is, when was the last conversation we've had with Northeastern on this?
Oh, God, um, last April, maybe, when they refused to talk to me anymore?
Anybody else on the Board of Selectmen, have they talked to um, Northeastern about negotiations?
No.
No.
We, we've been generally delegating, uh, because we can't, you know, two, two people, two selectmen causes, uh, causes a quorum. So uh, we've generally been delegating the chairman as that spokesman along with Tony and Town Council.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I'm in, I'm in communication with Northeastern when it comes to other things related to their property, but as far as like negotiation goes, that hasn't occurred um, in quite some time.
They haven't moved from their last person. Knows. Um, on January Whoever knows, on January 28th, we're going to have a, a information session along with a question and answer session on the subject of eminent domain. So please tune into that. More details will be coming, but it'll, it'll be hosted by our eminent domain attorney, who has made a career out of eminent domain and probably a preeminent eminent domain lawyer in Massachusetts, if not, if not one of the leaders in the country. So that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Should be very informative. So prepare all your questions about eminent domain for that session in two weeks.
That will be, that'll be hosted through Zoom. It'll also be broadcasted through the cable TV station live. Of course, you can't ask questions from your couch on, through, through the TV, but through Zoom, you will be able to.
What's, what's the date and time on that?
Um, the 27th, Thursday, the 27th, and I think we are.
That's the 28th.
Thursday, the 28th.
Yep. At what time?
And we're trying to start at 6:30.
And, and where, where can folks find the link to it? Is it in the community calendar?
It'll get posted just in the community calendar. And it'll be, yeah, it'll be on the website.
Hey, as a, as a prelude to the, the presentation or the discussion, would it be worth it to have RKG give a summary of this report prior to that?
I think that the, I think that when you're, I think what's key is kind of segmenting the conversation out. This, the idea of this one on the 28th is more of procedure and process. How does eminent domain work? What are your options? You know, that sort of stuff, that 101 on eminent domain. Not so much a debate about, you know, the value, you know, the appraisal number or this report, or whether we, you know, should or shouldn't pursue. It's more of a eminent domain 101. And I think, I think, you know, it's, the comment, it's a complicated conversation. It's a lengthy conversation. If, I think it's important to keep it kind of segmented. But it's up to the Board of Selectmen, Gene.
Well, what, what if you had, rather than RKG, what if the, this is perfect tonight, what Bob did, if he were to run through that, while we have everybody on there?
Yeah, I, I don't, Gene, I'd be happy to do it. I, I tend to agree with Tony as, let's not confuse the topics. And if we wanted to do a separate session on just the, the financial aspects of it, we could do that.
All right.
Was it?
It sounds good, Bob. Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah. I mean, this, this is a lot to, you know, for Russ Lehman to learn about eminent domain. I think that's a full evening's agenda. There's a lot of questions people are going to want to ask. I think that's going to be a pretty full evening and very informative.
One time.
But I think that, but here's the thing about it, about that. And I'm, and I understand wanting to keep those two separate. But I think that people won't understand, won't understand, there's not enough context. Why would we go to the trouble and expense of eminent domain without the context of what not going to eminent domain is going to cost each Nahant resident? So maybe there's some sort of context setting before you talk about what eminent domain means.
Yeah, without going into the detail and tell people there will be a second session on this and such. Thank you.
Judy, that's a good point, I think.
Yeah, that is a good point. It's the why it matters.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So maybe, maybe a brief intro on the finances, followed by our long session on the eminent domain.
Right. And without taking questions or discussion on the finances, because that'll be another meeting, but just, just to set the stage of why you're even considering eminent domain, because that's not without cost.
It does make, it does make sense to me.
Yeah, maybe we can do a prelude to that before, before Tony, but we'll, we'll talk about the agenda and how we set that up. But I, I think Judy brings up a very good point.
All right. More, more questions, discussions?
May open the chat room, Bob.
Yeah.
But Bob, thank you for going through this again, or go with us, with us, because every time you say that, it means it's a little clearer to me. It started out pretty muddy. So thank you for this.
Yeah, this is very clear. Just what we needed. Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out how to open the chat.
I think if you just read the questions in the chat room.
Yeah, no, first I have to figure out how to get to the chat room. I think I have to stop sharing.
I can do that. I can do that for you if you like.
All right. Well, why don't you read them and then we can tag team our way through this.
Okay. Tony, you have them?
Um, yeah. So Bob, are you on like a PowerPoint?
This is a, yeah, this is a PowerPoint.
So hit, hit escape or at the top of your screen, there should be a stop sharing.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I do have to stop sharing. All right.
And then the chat button is down the bottom. And it'll pull up on your screen on the right-hand side. And then, you know, typically, I, I think, I think what would be good is maybe if you call the name of the person who, you know, typed in the chat and then they can unmute themselves, announce their name and address and address the committee.
Can I make chat bigger than it is? Probably not.
You can drag it, you know, right above the word chat. If you scroll your mouse, you'll get a two-sided arrow. You can click on that and drag it up.
There we go. That's better. Okay.
I've become somewhat of an expert.
Really?
Yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't use.
It could be life after being a town administrator.
Yeah. I'll teach Zoom 101.
Be a Zoom consultant. A Zoomy. All right. So the first one, from Ken Colangelo to everyone, they are not the same. RKG's numbers are significantly lower than the BOS. I'm not sure what to make of that.
I think you, you know, I found over the, you know, doing this with Board of Selectmen meetings, it, I think it's best to call on the person that typed in the chat room, unmute themselves and let them make their comment themselves and go from there.
Okay. Yep. I see Ken's smiling face. So he's still with us?
I think you have to unmute him.
But you're on mute. If you're like me, you're at your most eloquent when you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Yeah. It's the, you lose the time sequence with the chat. It's like the comments from long ago.
Right.
Um, I guess, I mean, the, my biggest question here is what, Bob, in your analysis, what are you comparing with the RKG report? Because in looking at what went out in the second statement versus what's in RKG, the comparison looks very different from what you had just put up on the PowerPoint.
Um, I am using the estimate that FinCom, or I, I did it in consultation with the FinCom and with some heavy input from, from FinCom and department heads and so forth. And it should tie to the second statement.
Yeah. I, I mean, I've just been looking at it in the hour or so before this meeting started, just out of raging curiosity. Um, and I, I mean, I can look at it more closely, but it would appear that they actually don't.
I think, I think you will find that they do.
Okay. Well, I mean, just for, for example, the per capita cost. And RKG actually cites this, calls this out specifically, you know, their per capita cost, taking out the things that they took out for education, et cetera, was $1,931 per person. The second statement's estimate was $2,835. So the RKG is 32% lower than what the selectmen's statement said.
That was capital, Bob.
No, it's, it's the operating cost.
Operating.
Yeah. They also, the infrastructure improvements required by the any project. Um, their, RKG doesn't say they don't have the capability. They say that these improvements would also benefit other residents and visitors to Nahant. Um, there was no indication provided that the additional estimated 175 vehicle trips or wastewater generated would result in failure of these infrastructure components, which indicates they didn't count it because it happens with or without Northeastern. There was the property tax shift that was, you know, part of the second statement's discussion and part of the cost.
No, it is not part of the cost.
Again, I'm not sure we're comparing.
And in fact, it is not a cost at all.
It's not, but it's mentioned in this booklet that went out to everyone in town. And according to RKG, it is negligible. This book says it's five to eight million and RKG says it's negligible.
Ken, 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 read the second statement. It is not a cost. It is simply a shifting of property tax burden.
Yes.
At least the Finance Committee was very careful to say, we are not in the business of trying to estimate real estate impact. However, if it were to occur, this would be the net effect. So we are not estimating it. It is not a cost. It's just.
However, that's not.
They're to make the taxpayers aware that that's what would happen.
Okay. And, and RKG's contention is that it would not happen. They literally, literally saying it would be negligible. So again, is it in the total? Maybe not, but that's, that's not how.
Pick whatever real estate forecasting crystal ball you want.
I'm taking the one from the $12,500 consultants that you all just hired. So.
Ken, it's, it's, it's Mark again. Let's, let's, let's just, let's just take RKG's report on its own.
Okay. So. Can I just, I just want to ask one question. The very first slide, Bob.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
Let's put aside the Board of Selectmen's. I mean, there's no doubt that there's a cost to the board, there's a cost to the taxpayer of the, of the town. Whatever report you accept.
There is a cost, yes. There are other options and negotiations, as you've mentioned. However, I guess as a taxpayer and citizen, a, a booklet from the Board of Selectmen making statements that are now being countered by this independent third party is, you know, not insignificant. And, and Bob, the, the graph that you put up first showing their RKG's estimates, I believe that it showed 14 to 41 million. I, I don't see 41 million anywhere in this report. And that graph is fairly stark. So if you want to check it again, I, again, that's why I, I want to be cautious here. And I understand I'm sounding moderately agitated here. But in, in comparing, you know, sort of item by item, what was presented to the public versus what's in RKG, I, I don't, I honestly, and Bob, I'm happy to do this offline in more detail if that would help.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I don't think it ties to what you're presenting here.
Okay. So you want to set up a call, Ken, and we can go through it?
Page two, the paragraph says that they conclude that the facility will result in total additional cost to the town of between 16.9 million and 21.7 million over a 40-year period. So they're very explicit about that.
They are, but that's not what Bob's graph says.
Yeah. And I, I took my numbers from, I think they call it Table 3.
I agree, Barbara. That's right. I mean, it makes them very, it would have been nice if they had sort of done this side by side. Um, but they, they are fairly clear about where the things differ.
Bob, what number are you trying to come up with?
I, I'm just trying, I'm trying to come up with an apples-to-apples number. You know, since, since they, they didn't touch the capital stuff, we, we really can't come up with a total net cost. So really what we're trying to do is just compare the line items that we can compare.
Well, what number is Mr. Colangelo trying to come up with?
I, I'm trying to compare the apples-to-apples, which is the, the second statement's total additional costs was 22.4 to 28.9 million. And what RKG is saying is 14.8 to 26.7 million. So that's somewhere between two and 14 million less than what the second statement says.
Much different than the $6 million they're offering us over 40 years.
Mark, that's a, that may or may not be true. And, and if no one's talked to them since last April, then that's, that's a separate question. I guess what, what I'm, what I'm trying to ascertain here and just understand is, you know, what, what's the actual result that we're looking at? And what was presented?
The difference is.
What are we hearing now?
The, the differences between RKG is saying 14 to what, 26?
26.7.
Yeah. And the Board of Selectmen is saying between 17 and.
22 to 28.9.
Yeah.
According to the second statement.
I mean, in my opinion, I mean, it's like, that is so separated from the $6 million that they're offering us. It, it's, does it matter?
Well, divided by 40 years, Mark, it actually, it, it does matter.
Well, what's a great, can you tell me?
So if you get to, so.
So what's a great?
Want to get to, if you get $220,000 a year from Northeastern, then you're done. Then you're even. $6 million upfront or regardless. That there's been no pilot discussion, that there's, that no one, the scholarship was the last time there was any discussion about payments to the town. I mean.
There has been, no.
Focusing on the numbers specifically, which.
There, there has been other discussions by members of the board prior to the, the previous board. Uh, but there has been discussions. The best offer Northeastern can come up with is $6 million over 40 years.
Okay. And again, looking at, looking at RKG and the pilot here, 220,000 to 285,000 annually would cover, would cover some range of these costs. So if that's, how, whether it's $6 million divided by that or that number annually or whatever, it's not, this is, it's not, it's not forced upon individual taxpayers. You know, there's, there's negotiation here. Anyway, it's, I'm more concerned at this point, I'm, I'm more concerned at this point that, that something was sent to the town that was not fully approved by the Finance Committee, that was presented in, just before a town meeting that didn't end up happening, but still was meant to sway voter opinion. And there are radically different numbers in this independent report. It's comparing this apple with this apple.
Yeah, the apples aren't, the apples aren't that different, Ken.
I, okay, may, maybe I'm looking at this the wrong way, but I don't believe I am. And I said, maybe it'd be more productive at this point to, to take it offline, which I'm happy to do.
I agree, because I think that the apples are, that they're, they're very expensive apples either way you go. They're, they're like golden apples. But thank you. Thanks for taking that offline. So I, that'd be great.
It's not the most expensive consulting report the town's ever had, by the way. That's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's actually true. Ken, seriously, do you, do you want to set up a call?
Sure.
All right.
I think I'm, I'm pretty sure I have your email sent.
Yeah. Okay. Rvanderslice.comcast.net. Okay. All right. So let's see. That was Ken. B Rogers, does it have wet labs or is it offices and rooms? So is B still here?
Yeah. Um, I guess we haven't seen the, I guess the two, I'll just short circuit everything. The, the question, one question I had was, do we know that it has wet labs? At one point, they were talking about office buildings and, you know, conference rooms and things like that. And I think that's obviously a wet lab building is going to cost more. And we haven't seen their final plan. So that was, that was just a plain question. And the other question that I put in, I might as well get them both out of the way, is. And the other question that I put in, I might as well get them both out of the way, is, it was my understanding that when the, when a municipality goes to court seeking to take property by eminent domain, that the court rules on whether eminent domain is justified and then adjudicates a value. But you, Mark, was it you that said, no, once the town votes to seek eminent domain, the only remaining question is the value? I, I, that's not what I had understood, I guess.
Yeah, well, tune in on the 27th and we can answer those questions.
Yeah, let's separate the questions, Mark. The, the wet labs piece, I believe from, in the FEIR, they show pipelines running from the pumping facility up to the, the new building, which would indicate there is some sort of wet lab capability. That, that's what I know. That's what I based that conclusion on, and I'm going to throw it back to Mark for whatever your observations are in anything about eminent domain.
Why, why don't you throw it back to Northeastern about whether they're putting labs in?
I think they're putting labs in. Go ahead, Josh.
But the eminent domain.
I was just going to say, the only, only factor from a FinCom perspective or a financial impact to the town perspective is how much the construction costs would be of a building, and therefore how much of a building permit fee we would collect. That's the implication of whether or where, whether or not there is wet labs in that particular building from a, from a financial impact to the town perspective.
Right, and, and the reason we assumed there were wet labs was because the FEIR had pipelines bringing seawater over there.
Okay, and, and the eminent domain, I'll wait for that answer.
Um, yeah, you can wait for the experts to chime in on that, B, because, uh, but my understanding of eminent domain is that once the town meeting authorizes the Board of Selectmen to take, and if the Board of Selectmen does take, then, uh, and we pay the pro porto amount, then we own it. Northeastern can then, at, at some point within three years, question whether the taking was in good faith, or question whether or not the amount in the pro porto that we offered was adequate.
Okay.
Chairman, I just, the other thing that'll be discussed on the 28th is there's the two different eminent domain laws or chapters in the general law of, uh, chapter 79 verse ADA, which is a little bit, I think what you were just describing was chapter 79. Um, chapter ADA is a little bit different, allows you to come up with a dollar amount and a decision to continue pursuing eminent domain. They're slightly different, 79 is the more, what Chairman Coleman was just describing is the more utilized version of eminent domain. So those things are, you know, that's the, that's the part of, or the value of the meeting on the 28th is understanding those two different options or understanding how it works. Um, and they'll, and they'll be able to answer all those types of questions.
But B, just, um, in the meantime, we have talked to the attorneys about your, exactly your question, you know, can it be challenged? And it's probably best to wait for the 28th, but.
Yep.
Uh, it is a question that we've raised.
Okay, I, I can wait two weeks. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, let's see, next is Susan Solomon, it says, and you have stated that there would be laboratories in the FEIR process. Susan, are you still on? No?
Yeah, yeah, I am, I was just trying to answer the question. I, I was just trying to answer the question for B. Uh, all of the FEIR documents clearly state that they plan to have quite a few laboratories. If you go through them, you'll find out there's a lot of detail on that. They also talk about laboratory classrooms as well as research laboratories. It's all in the FIR, their documents.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't know, that wasn't an invidious question, I just didn't know.
Uh, from Andrea Murphy to everyone, but there's no question there. Yeah, Andrea, are you with us, and is there a question, or? Okay, so moving on, Alice Court, if RKG estimates that the operating expenses for an additional 114 people is an annual cost of 323 some odd thousand dollars, does that mean that the current population is already costing the town the same amount? And, um, yeah, I think they actually say that in their report.
I think Josh, Josh, you can probably comment on this.
Um, yes, this is the answer. They are costing us right now.
Yeah, and I think the other thing I found interesting about the RKG report was that they pointed out what Susan Solomon and I presented before is that the building that they're building is way too big according to academic standards for just 114 people. And so when RKG estimates per capita costs for, you know, over 200 people, that's far more along the lines of the actual building that they are building according to many universities' academic standards. Who's laughing, is that, sorry, I don't know. But anyway, that, that, I thought that that gave extra legitimacy also to the, the report in my eye when, when you're moved towards the higher estimates that they're providing.
Yeah, that's, that's true, Alice, but just to be clear, the, their low estimate took Northeastern out the word that the added, the added population is 114.
You know, I under, I understand that, and in all of the FEIR reports, they keep on mentioning the current plan, the current plan, the current plan, you know, about what they're going to do. So the value is to look at both the low and the high number.
Exactly.
Their, their original filing was for.
144.
47 or something like that, because I remember we changed our estimates when they changed their population.
Well, their original notice to the Globe at the very beginning of all this was like 64, that they were only going to have 20 more faculty members and, you know, just a few more graduate students and so forth. And that was the, when they initially presented the, um, plan to the town, what was it, December of 2018 or something? And, um, and then they gave a story to the Globe. But then the numbers went up significantly as we were pointing out that their building was way too big for those numbers, and their numbers are still way too big. But Susan did most of the calculations, so if she wants to weigh in again, I'll back off.
Yeah, this is Dana Sheen, I was wondering if I could follow up on your, your comment about if there are 114 persons there now, then it's costing the town now 323,000 per year for those people. I mean, if we do a hypothetical, we, Northeastern closes and decides to go to Gloucester or Lynn or wherever, will the town have 323,000 extra in their, in their budget because those people left? I don't think so. So, I mean, there's, there are fixed and variable costs here, and there's also economies of scale. So it's like this per capita.
Well, they're not paying that now, Dana.
Questionable for me.
They're not paying that now, Dana.
Well, but, all right, so.
And Dana, that's another reason why you do an estimate over 40 years is to try to get away from some of that stepwise incremental cost stuff. Go ahead, I, I kind of jumped on your question.
Yeah, I guess, Bob, I guess it raises my consciousness about it. It's like, if 114 people left, Nahant would still be paying the same. There's not going to be a $323, 323,000 less per year in spend issues by the town. So it's just, it's interesting to think of it that way.
In the RKG report, in the RKG report, they give three estimates. They give a low of 114, which is the number of users now. They have a medium of 147 is the number reported and then used reports, and a high of 205, which they say is the maximum that that facility could handle. So you've got three ranges that you're working with there.
Right, right, thanks, Gene, okay.
Josh, what were you going to say? Um, just, you know, acknowledging that Dana's asked an interesting question, and I've spent a lot of time on this, you know, how do you quantify this? And it's, you know, I kind of equate it to, like us, or like me as a taxpayer, I've never had to have the fire department come to my house or the police department have to come to my house. I've never had to go in an ambulance, so I should be free, right? But that's not how a community works. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a price of admission thing, we're all in this together. And I think that's why some version of a per capita assessment, you know, is the only sensible way you can really assess this thing. But I do, you know, it's an interesting question, Dana, but, um, just my own personal ponderings, that's, uh, that's how I look at it.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, let's see, moving, moving down the list, B, we've already talked about B's second question. Andrea Murphy, I'm just going to read it. Um, 40 years and $6 million, he says people, I think she means dollars, exclamation point. That was the last offer that may have been withdrawn, really? Do we really want to give up East Point for this? It's not a question, so I'm just going to ask Andrea if there's any, any follow-up to that?
I don't think she's there anymore.
Okay, all right, Susan Solomon, 21. I think we've talked about that already. Dana wants to be in the call with Ken, fine, when we set it up, I'll pass the invite, the meeting invite over. Susan Solomon, FEI documents by Northeastern clearly state there will be laboratories again, and that is the end of the questions in chat. Is there any further questions, comments, discussion, particularly from the public? No? Um, Finance Committee, is there any, is there any other business or things we should have discussed but did not? Selectmen?
I don't have anything else.
Well, sir.
All right, so I, I think a motion to adjourn may be in order.
Some moved.
Second? Margaret seconds? Roll call vote?
Katie, aye.
Well, Van Der Slice, aye, just to fill the silence.
Dana, aye.
Brown, aye, wherever it is. Whit, brown, aye, I got it, okay.
Charmy, aye.
I'm one, Louis, aye.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
Um, why not, I won't, we, we have a Board of Select meeting the next time you guys meet, so I won't be here, Allison will join you guys. I think Debbie, I think Debbie's going to join you, too. That'll be her last, uh, meeting with you guys. But if there's anything you need from us or me before that, will you just let me know?
Okay. And thank you.
Yeah, could I have a motion from the board to adjourn?
Yep, I move that the Board of Selectmen adjourn.
Second. Motion is made, second. Any discussion on the motion, hearing none? All those in favor?
Josh, aye, Trump, aye.
Dean, Kent, aye. All right, come on, aye. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in, appreciate it.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night. And Bob, are you still there?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
You'll send me that comparison document, thank you.
I certainly will.
All right.
Okay, have a good night, everyone.
You, too.